I'm Helga Van Staden, MMC for Sports Recreation, Arts and Culture. I would just like to welcome all our stakeholders that are in the house. I'd also like to welcome all our viewers on livestream. We'd also like for you to follow it. And then there will be a session where we have questions and answers. So we hope for a fruitful discussion. We also hope for a robust discussion. So thanks so much for joining us this evening. And we'll just hand over to our ED to explain the purpose of the meeting. Thank you. Sorry, our mayor, executive mayor, thank you.
Greetings to everyone here today. And greetings to our guests and our panelists. I'm sure Helga will then introduce the panelists. But I must say, we have people who are connecting on Facebook and Twitter live. And also, we felt that we must have our stakeholders here directly to be able to engage with us in this conversation. The purpose of the meeting, as you know, is that we have started a process as per the law in terms of naming of cities and towns and all that to respond to the announcement by the National Minister of Arts and Culture, Mr. Nathan Tetwa, who has announced the Gazette, Tet Name, or names for our city, the renaming of the airport, Port Elizabeth, Yudnate, and one other part in dispatch. But we felt that as a city, after we listened to the voices of the people, that we must start a process of engaging with this process. And listening to conversations that the people were having. Because tomorrow, we're making a formal submission on behalf of the city, not on behalf of the municipality only, but on behalf of the city to the minister to say this is the view of the people. The details are going to be explained by Mrs. Muaz, the logistics, the submissions. So remember, I have opened up a communication with the residents to say those who wish to make a submission on this issue of renaming of these towns and the airport must then submit their comments. And you might have heard my views about the renaming of these towns. We must remember that we're not only talking about Port Elizabeth, we're also talking about Yudnate. And the consultation process and the views of the people. But what we wanted to have, not the views of the mayor, because the mayor might be one person. But we wanted to get our residents into a conversation about this project of nation building. I call it a project of nation building because since 1994, when we established a democratic project, we had a constitution that embraces certain values amongst those that we wanted to build a South Africa for all South Africans, a truly non-racial South Africa. That whilst we do not want to forget the realities of our past, but we must forgive our past and build a South Africa where all of us can hold hands together and move forward as South Africans in building one nation for all South Africans. And therefore, this is very important. And I think the reaction of the people of the city, it reflected exactly what we want to build as South Africans. Because these conversations we are having, it was not a white conversation only, or a colored conversation only, or Indian conversation only, or Africans like, black people like me only. It became a conversation for all South Africans across the board, where there was an expression of rejection on certain names in the city, not by whites, not by coloreds, not by Indians, not by black people like me, but by all residents in Nelson Mandela. And I think as we move forward as a country, we should learn from that because it's so critical that all the conversations that we have as a nation, Professor, should be the conversations of all South Africans. And which includes the diversity of our people. And I think this debate have provided us an opportunity to have a conversation as South Africans. And I want us to take this debate as such. We are not fighting with anybody. We are not fighting with government. We are not fighting with the minister. But what we do... But what we're doing, we're utilizing our constitutional right to have a voice and that government must start to listen to us also as people in this kind of a conversation. Therefore, this submission will be written to go forward. We have had interactions with business, with churches, with civil society, and many other sectors, including political parties. You can see here today. Therefore, it's a conversation for all of us to take this process forward. But today is not my day because we have approached our universities. Professor Mlanjana, many of you might have seen him on TV, is a well-respected political commentator, a professor from Weds University, originally from Port Elizabeth. We have approached the university. The professor for Kosa language is there, who was part of the conversation. We've also been having conversation with businesspeople, big businesspeople who were engaging in this discussion with us. And today, we are here to engage all our residents. We could have called a big meeting in Centenary Wall or in Fethermarket Wall, but we said because of COVID, we'll invite the stakeholders here and then the residents will participate through social media and other networks. I am not going to engage now in this discussion myself because the time has arrived now that this discussion must be the discussion of the people and not the mayor. As I was being briefed, they were asking me, please, mayor, please, today is not your day, it's the day of the people. Therefore, with those few words, is that let's engage in this conversation together. I know the professor is going to just briefly present to you what will be presented to the minister. And the document at a later stage, when it's submitted, is going to be made public to the people for them to see in black and white what we have submitted to the minister. Without wasting your time, we are only going to have this meeting for an hour because it's a just consultation process. And then after an hour, we're going to close our meeting. We can't keep people on social media, other people can't have enough data. With those few words, over to you, Helga.
Thank you, mayor. You partially covered me in introducing Professor Mlanjana. The professor is well-known if you switch on your radio set, listening to radio talk shows, watching television. You know, the professor is well-known. He's well-spoken and that is all I can do as an introduction. He'll speak for himself this evening and we'll see like the wealth of knowledge that he has and the insight that he has in many, many aspects. So welcome, professor. You can take us forward now.
Thank you. My role has been a very small one, which is to consolidate and provide some interpretation to the various complaints that have been submitted. I'm told it's more than 66,000 of such complaints. As the mayor was saying, the document itself will be made available at a later stage. And when you get that document, you will notice that in the last page, there's about 10 or so grounds, if not more, for the objection. But I will not get into all of that now. We are challenging, or the complaints rather, over main things, but they fall pretty much into four or five categories. So I will stick to those categories. The first category really is about the inadequacy of the process. Inadequate in that those who attended could not be called or regarded by any stretch of imagination as representative of their own communities. There were eight meetings held throughout the month of November. And of those eight meetings, 393 people attended in a population of more than 1.4 million. That is, if you were to calculate it or break it down to percentages, it's 0.00001 or something like that. So that on its own is not representative. And this point was raised actually at the actual meetings themselves, when they were held, by people who had attended. In Motherwell, for instance, only 10 people showed up in a community of 140, more than 140,000 people. And a former councillor at the time, Mr. Desi, said, "We can't here, in good conscience, take a decision being 10 on behalf of more than 140,000 people and call ourselves representative." Because if we do that, then we are setting ourselves for a backlash later on. Because people will say, really, 10 people cannot represent a population that big. So there's an issue of representation that was raised both in Motherwell as well as in Yudnay. Yudnay, you had 70, Motherwell 10. The highest was 160-something here at City Hall. But that sample compared to the overall population is minstrel, less than minstrel, it's very small. So there's an issue of representation. And the reason for this is because the Geography's name council complied with the most minimum procedures in organizing this event. According to the handbook or according to them, all they need to do is to issue three ads in a newspaper as well as in radio. While most people don't read newspapers, in addition to that, it's very easy for people to miss ads on radio. And the fact that you had such a minstrel attendance testifies to the inadequacy of the mobilization process leading towards the event. And in fact, Mr. Jodwana, who was chairing these events, also admitted that better ways of communication could have been employed, including, for instance, it was advised by political parties that you should have used a loud hailer a few days ahead of the event. You could have done door-to-door visits. All these are traditional forms of communication and mobilization that tend to turn out people in large numbers. That did not happen. And he said, well, perhaps we should have done that. However, he insisted on going ahead with the process. So what you have here is insistence on compliance over the integrity and credibility of the outcome. There was less care on the credibility of the outcome, but more on compliance with the minimalist procedures. That's the first issue. Related to that obviously is that Woma was excluded from the public participation process. No public gathering was held in Woma. That amounts to excluding people, not being part of the process. And in fact, had a gathering been held in Woma, they might have realized that in fact, the name applies more to Woma than to the city itself. The people of Woma have historically referred to that part of the city as Kabeka when officialdom decreed it to Woma native location. They refused to use a colonially imposed name and instead used Kabeka. And the name, the usage of the name has continued even to present-day Woma. There are public entities there that are named after Kabeka. Kabeka Public Library, Kabeka School, Kabeka Festival, Kabeka this and Kabeka that. And even the municipality itself in its own billing system, some residents there are dressed as residents of Kabeka. So even though the name itself has not been officially adopted, but it has made its way into official language. So what you have then in Woma is a clear case and a cry for standardization. Because on the one hand, you have Woma, on the other, you have Kabeka. And the purpose of this process, name changing, is to standardize name, recognize the name that have historically been in use. So Woma applies a lot more appropriately or Kabeka applies a lot more appropriately to Woma. And even if you were to adopt the name in Woma, then you would run into the controversy about the origin and the spelling of the name. The origin of the name is said to be of Koiansan. Kosas say the name has no meaning in their own language. So that's contention, that is controversy. And secondly, if you follow the handbook on name changes, there are technical requirements that if you are restoring a historical name, you also have to restore it in its linguistic form. So then the question is, why not, if you're spelling it, spell it in the original Koiansan alphabets, if you call them that? So what this serves to do is to accentuate. It eliminates the controversy that has revolved around this name. And the intention of name change is it's not to trigger controversy. It is to foster social cohesion. It doesn't make sense to insist on the name about which you cannot draw any definitive conclusion about its meaning. And those who claiming to affirm that it's a Kosa name do not know the origin or no meaning of this name. So it is self-contradictory. You are not achieving social cohesion but creating a wedge, right? So that's another contradiction that on which that sparks a complaint. And the third issue is about how best, how best do you name a city in the way that accentuates the brand of the city? If you look at the handbook, the process seeks to achieve multiple objectives. And oftentimes, the argument is that, or other people tend to be divided supporting one objective over another. Businesspeople, for instance, would complain that name changes takes place at the expense of business activity. And there are those amongst us would say, well, we need to restore culture and history of people who are formerly marginalized. Our point here is that all these objectives need not be exclusive of each other. In fact, you can, in choosing an appropriate name, achieve all the objectives. And this is where the name Nelson Mandela City actually came up in the conversations as a better choice for the name of the city. And this choice did not come up, or this name was not proposed in this recent process of 2018 or just now. It dates back to 2007. The municipality took a decision as they were preparing for the World Cup in 2010. They looked around and thought about how best to market the city because the city was going to be one of the host venues. They decided against using Port Elizabeth because Port Elizabeth was not necessarily the best brand. Already, the metro was named Nelson Mandela Metro. So they decided to latch on the Nelson Mandela name because that is a better brand, an internationally known brand, a name of an iconic figure that is loved and endures the city to people because the figure itself is generally adored. What they wanted to do actually was to market the city as Nelson Mandela City. But they couldn't do that. Technically, it would have been incorrect because they hadn't gone through a public process of naming the city or renaming the city. They thought about hosting these public events, but the demands of preparing for the World Cup were too daunting and therefore, they decided to defer the public process to a later stage, especially after the World Cup. But they didn't do that. And the fact that they didn't do that points to certain administrative lapses. But what we know for a fact is that the municipality, as far back as 2007, decided that they would ditch the name Port Elizabeth. They would adopt Nelson Mandela as the name of the city. And they even invested substantial financial resources in promoting that brand. So the city already has a brand as Nelson Mandela. If you then impose a different name on that, you are then diluting an already existing brand, right? And branding is very important. We cannot dismiss the importance of branding, especially for a city that is in competition with other cities elsewhere, attracting tourism. So you need really to put your best foot forward. And already, the municipality is preparing a process to build even more memorials. So the iconography of Nelson Mandela is being accentuated even further to affirm the Nelson Mandela brand of the city. There's going to be the Nelson Mandela Tower of Light. There's also going to be Mandela Peace Park, where you will have all these Nobel Prize recipients, all four of them, I think, in South Africa. That adds, illuminates the Nelson Mandela-ness of the city. But not only that, it also links up quite well with the provincial brand. The provincial brand being the home of legends, which makes it even a lot easier to the Nelson Mandela name to be linked up to the tourism program of the Liberation Route, Heritage Route. And Nelson Mandela is a very prominent part of that heritage route. Starting from Kono, you will have tourists taken through the Nelson Mandela Heritage Route. And that's where the city will also benefit. It will not only showcase memorials related to Mandela, but it will also showcase other liberation activities, related monuments. Vusi Lamine and many other activities that commemorates the history of this city. So in a nutshell, really, those were the key issues that came up. And perhaps the last point could be that, and this needs emphasizing, is that this submission is not objecting to the process of changing the name of the city per se. submission is not objecting to the process of changing the name of the city per se. In fact, there is wide support for name changes, because it is recognized as a part or a measure towards redressing the injuries of the past. I mean, actually, the source of name changes is the TRC report, that said, as part of reparations, as part of healing a wounded city, a wounded country, let's honor people in many ways, including recognizing their history and honoring their names. So what it is objecting to, though, is the impact that is likely to have on creating divisions in a city that has been working towards unity. And part of that unity is seen in how people have generally embraced the change of the airport to David Stirling, because David Stirling is a big part of the public consciousness, public identity and history of this city. The objection, therefore, is directed primarily at the two names, to say, if you want to affirm people equally, to create a sense that all people matter and they matter equally. The impression that is being created here is that others are being affirmed over some, as if to create the impression that you have been affirmed sufficiently enough, so there's no need for redress for you, rather, we would focus on these ones. That also creates a lot of controversy. So the point is to use name changes in a way that achieves its intended objectives, which is to create social cohesion. Don't insist on names whose origin and meaning is in doubt, when in fact, in doing so, you are creating even more divisions. Go for names that do both, restore history and dignity, and at the same time, promote the economic activity of the city. In fact, this name Nelson Mandela, as I close, does something quite extraordinary and settles the debate about either or. You are using history and culture as a basis of economic activity, because the name Nelson Mandela itself instantly boosts tourism. So here, culture is actually a boost for economic activity. So those are the four key issues upon which the submission has been formulated, arising out of a lot of submissions, as I said earlier, more than 60,000, and it will be submitted tomorrow. With those few words, mayor, let me sit down.
We would then immediately go over to the Edie, just to give her input. Thanks so much, Edie.
Thank you very much, and good evening to the people of Nelson Mandela Bay. Mine is going to be very short, just to give the process that we have followed until today and also moving forward, which professor has touched on briefly. You will all remember that we woke up to a morning where everyone was no longer in Port Elizabeth, but in Kabeha. And I think the outcry in social media, emails and everywhere was overwhelming enough for the mayor to urgently call a meeting, because some of the emails were directed to him and claiming that, "Mayor, if you are part of this process, we need to deal with this." And they wanted action from him. And in fact, most residents wanted an explanation, rightfully so, because he is heading the local state. And therefore, mayor immediately called a meeting with Mr. Jodwana, who is the chair of the Eastern Province Geographical Names Committee, who provided him with a meeting and another senior official locally. Mayor wanted to understand exactly how has the process unfolded, why does the committee think that there's an outcry with regards to the names or to the renaming of specifically Port Elizabeth and Utuneg? And I think it was a fruitful meeting, because at the end, after explaining the process and what they have complied with, he did give the mayor advice in terms of the Act, which is Act 118, Section 10, Subsection 3, that indicates that residents may send complaints directly to the minister if they are unhappy about the process or about the renaming of their areas. With that overwhelming emails and outcry of the city, mayor then started a process of facilitating for the residents to have their say to the minister, because it was going to be difficult for each one to do their own. So he facilitated the process. But in doing that, the first thing that he did was to immediately establish a multisectoral committee made of the university, the tourism sector, the chamber, and some major businesses in the city, and other social organizations. We then decided that probably the best thing to do is to engage the community by making their voices heard through a complaints form, which was put on all social platforms, emails and everywhere. And we invited the community to have their say. Hence, professors, from online submissions and various letters and elaborate letters written by various businesses and various local residents as well as... But I must say that, at the same time that mayor was facilitating, we realized that this was not the only complaint facilitation process. Already in Utuneg, there was a process that was going ahead by a committee that was looking after the Utuneg name, and there were other letters written by various organizations to the minister directly. We then received 66,540 submissions from the residents of Nelson Mandela Bay, with various inputs and elaborate letters from businesses that indicated the impact of the name change. But I must say that, very few, because when you want views from people, you don't want only people who agree with you. You want also people to oppose the process, to say, "We are happy with Kabeha." But I must say that, there are people who are saying, most of the people are saying, "We agree to name change." And as prof said, there's really nothing about the airport, but people are not agreeable to Kabeha. But they affirm that name change must happen, but probably the choice of the name, same as in Utuneg, and a whole lot of other things that the professor has indicated. And we did last week, because this is a process that the mayor is facilitating for the citizens, there was a public participation process where some of the residents connected, and some of them were allowed to connect to Zoom as part of the meeting, and they did voice. Some of them especially wanted to understand the process prior, because this is a process that started in 2018 already, finalized in 2021. But we did formalize that, we will indeed assist the people of Nelson Mandela Bay to make a submission to the minister in terms of the Act 118. This is the second stakeholder meeting that is taking place, after the technical committee as established, has made those inputs that the prof was talking to. And before the submission tomorrow, we wanted to make sure that the people of Nelson Mandela Bay understand exactly what we are putting forward as a submission in terms of the complaints from Nelson Mandela Bay. And as I said, this is in terms of the Act, which is Act 118 of 1998, subsection 10, 3. What will happen is that from here tomorrow, we will make the submission to the minister. The various complaint forms have been submitted already. We sent them via courier today, so that they are in an attachment to the elaborate submission that the prof was talking to. There are various letters as well from various organizations that will, and ordinary citizens, that will be part of the submission that will submit tomorrow, and then we will wait for the response from the minister. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now with that time, for questions, comments from the residents, that I'm going to be the chairperson for it. Over to you, ladies and gentlemen. Introduce yourself, your name, where you're coming from and all that.
Good evening, mayor and panel and residents. Just for the record, Freedom From Plus is also opposing the name changes, and we also are submitting tomorrow morning early our subvention to the minister. Yeah, basically as well, why we are also against the proposed name changes in the Eastern Cape, among others, like Port Elizabeth, McClair, Aitkenaga, we also feel that it is not in the best interest of the residents. You know, at this stage, residents are burdened with poor service delivery and problems associated therewith. And also, the proposed name change will have great financial implications for all spheres of government, while making absolutely no contribution to alleviation of poverty, infrastructure development, or the growth of local economy. It is also unacceptable that the ANC government wants to change the names of towns, cities, as in doing so, it is disregarding the history and development of these towns and cities. And then lastly, the name change will constitute a breach of the compromise that was entered into in 1994, according to which it was agreed that municipalities will be given new names, while the names of towns and cities are retained as is. Therefore, the metro is called the Nelson Mandela, Nelson Mandela Bay Metro, as the professor also proclaimed, and the name of the city remains Port Elizabeth, as recognition and equal representation of our history and diversity. The only question I want to raise and ask the professor is that, you know, in media, newspapers, et cetera, from the committee, it came alight that the process, according to myself, the process was not 100% correct, because of the fact that the minister should have given the 30-day period, what we're having now, before it was gazetted, whereby it was gazetted and then they called it an attachment, or we didn't see it as citizens, that in small print, we had now 30 days. What is your take on that, professor? Thank you, thank you, mayor.
Afternoon, mayor. I think we all agree...
Introduce yourself.
Oh, Pila Machai, Nafkok, Nelson Mandela Bay, secretary. I think we all agree that we have an issue with the name, and we have experience of a minister refusing that our reasoning of changing the name is not legit. Is there a process after that situation, where the minister says, "Your submission is not accepted, we are keeping with Kabeha"? Is there a process after that?
Any other person?
Andre Krosier. I represent in part the Historical Society for Port Elizabeth, for which I am with the committee. So the first point I would just like to make is that the Historical Society of Port Elizabeth supports the proposal which the honourable mayor has made, to change the name for the city to the Nelson Mandela Bay, or Nelson Mandela City, much as we would like to have retained the name of Port Elizabeth, being of course the Historical Society of Port We would also like, we've also in our submission challenged the naming of Utuneg, as the name, one of the objects of the handbook is to avoid duplication and confusion. And there's already a well-recognized part of the Eastern Cape called Karicha, which is a part of a Kenton-on-Sea. The river Karicha goes into the mouth, the mouth of the Karicha is there, and there's a well-known game farm in that area also called Karicha. Whereas, as regards Utuneg, no one has ever associated Karicha, as far as I'm aware, with Utuneg. As just mentioned in the handbook, where the decision is to make a change to the name of an existing city, there is a special procedure there. But that is where the name of an existing city has been changed. And in both the case of Utuneg and Port Elizabeth, there obviously was no existing city when it was originally named. But as an association, we recognize the enormous importance for a city to have a name with the brand value and the acceptance, not only in the country but internationally, of Nelson Mandela. So that's the first point I'd like to make. If I may just make the other point, and that is that the media in this whole matter, in my opinion, has really let the people down. Throughout, and I'm pointing a finger directly at the Herald, from the very moment it started, they announced, "The name has been decided, and that's it," and live with it, but in fact, the procedure is not that at all. The minister announces the decision of the council, and thereafter, there is 30 days in which people may lodge objections or complaints. The minister then deals with those complaints. If necessary, he refers the complaints back to the council, and only then does he make his decision to say, "Look, I've heard the complaints, the council has or has not considered them, and my decision is final." So my point is, the media, instead of ramming through the names, should be at this stage still making it quite plain that the matter is not final, it still has to be decided. And in fact, this whole procedure works on the basis that if there is no objection to a name, then the minister will sign it off. But if there is strenuous objection to a name, then the minister will, if he has any sense, send it back to the council to be reconsidered for further recommendations, because obviously the name is not receiving widespread approval. Thank you very much.
I want to check whether you, have you submitted your objection or complaint?
Yes, we have submitted our objection directly by way of email to the minister and various other names, which was supplied by the Herald. And here, again, I must just make the point, that the notice issued by the minister is actually defective. He should have, in his notice, stated, A, it's not final, and B, there's 30 days in which to object, and to where Monsieur object, because that has been a big problem. We don't know where to, can you do it by email, to what address, and by what date? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, chaplain. Such a commendation, chaplain, such a commendation. You would like to comment, chaplain, the initiatives of...
And so introduce yourself first.
So this is my name from Amakaweto Foundation. I would like to comment the initiatives taken by the city and 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 other of your panelists. A name they would like to endorse as Amakaweto Foundation and most probably the civil society movement, the Nelson Mandela City. It's a salable name, we can say it is a salable name. And I just wanted to know if you know of any name proposed by the residents of Utuneg as opposed to Karicha?
Any other contribution, uh president?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening. My name is Donovan May from EP Cricket, but I carry two hats tonight, and that is also a member of society. Mayor, just one, one or two things, um obviously from a sporting perspective, uh the name is is a bit of a problem, you know, Kabecha. I think we are also building a brand at Eastern Province Cricket with Nelson Mandela Bay Warriors and also the Warriors team itself, which is world round, you know, world renowned. And we're also trying to attract international players to our shores. So the name is a bit of a problem, uh because people don't know the name. You might get people that can't even spell a name when they come to the to the city itself. One other question is that has the mayor taken legal advice on the on the way in which the the minister has initiated the name? And I don't want to slate the minister at this stage because I think I'm also on a collision course with the minister from cricket's African perspective. So I respect that particular process and know how quick he makes these decisions. So um has there been a legal process to address the minister? And and has there been any input back from the minister itself? Thank you, mayor.
Hello, sir? You can come. I hope Mamu was also noting.
Yeah, I'm just speaking as a resident and also as an ex co-member on the Heritage Trust. I think for me, a big question, and it's also a bit of the elephant in the room scenario is that we talking about, well, we're not a, we're not a um a cultural melting pot. We still have many parts that make up the Rainbow Nation. How do we, as a basis for a name change, decide that we are going to erase Indigo Violet and Blue while at the same time raising the platform for other cultures? We can't erase the contributions of one one culture while we are busy platforming others, which needs to happen. I mean, I I just don't understand how we can be saying this is a Rainbow Nation when we want to erase something. We need to have a proper grievance in our reasoning for why PE must have its name removed in the first place, not just we changing the name just because. So we need to be very careful that we don't have the narrative of your history doesn't mean anything, um while at the same time respecting people who need the platform, need to have their own cultures acknowledged. Thanks.
Any other input? One, two, three. Um Mamu was.
Thank you, as a mayor, um I think the first three questions are process uh issues. Let me first start by answering the Utuneg uh question about other names that were proposed by Utuneg for Utuneg. It's a Dolofieni, a garden town, the third one is Karicha, and the fourth one was Kamesh. So those were the four names that were proposed uh for for Utuneg. The the gazette on the naming of the cities and other towns uh came out on the twenty-third of February, is dated the twenty-third of February. And I must say that in in the gazette, uh the gentleman was noting that probably this is, there's something missing that should have indicated uh that there's still thirty days. Unfortunately, I'm quoting from the gazette, there's nothing like that. The gazette just introduces the new names of the various cities or towns. But my thinking is that you need to read the gazette in conjunction with the Act. In terms of the Act, which is Act one-one-eight of nineteen ninety-eight, uh it starts by saying in number one, ten point one, the minister may approve or reject a geographical name recommended by the council in terms of section nine point one. Then it says the second one, a geographical name approved or rejected by the minister in terms of that subsection must be published in the gazette. So the minister must gazette first. And then afterwards, which is the process that we are now undertaking, it says, any person or body dissatisfied with the geographical name approved by the minister may, within one month from the date of the publication of the geographical name in the gazette, lodge a complaint in writing to the minister. And I must, and then it continues with what you said, that the minister has may refer the complaint to the National Committee for advice, whether or not to reject or amend the geographical name approved. And then the minister must inform after that the complainant of the decision on the complaint and the reasons for the decision. That's that's where it ends. But I must say that there was, in in terms of the process, a a a um and by the EPGC, a process whereby they invited people to object to the names. And there were objections that were sent. And I do remember that one of the objections that we have received says, we had an online submission of twenty-six thousand names, but that objection of twenty-six thousand names, because it was sent as, it was regarded as one objection. So there was a time in the process that objections were called and people did object. And so the objections period has passed, we are now in in the period where the minister is accepting or taking submissions in terms of complaints to the process that has been gazetted. Thank you.
Let me, let me answer the question over why names are being changed and that there is no reason for changing names and the reason has not been explained. There is a reason for changing names and that reason is as old as place names themselves. There is, there is a reason why those in authority impose names that celebrate their own culture and history. It's an affirmation of authority. It's a marker of dominance. Because none of the names that settlers imposed were Kosa names. All of them celebrated the origin of settlers, celebrated the government of settlers, Elizabeth Queenstown. So the names are indicative of dominance and the dictatorship of that context. And the names are not innocent. They project the authority of those in power. They erase the memory of those who were there. There's an assumption that there were no people in that place. The claims are made that we discovered, as if history and life begins with the arrival of settlers. That's false, it's prejudice. And so for a country then that causes of a democratic, non-racial society, then you would agree that it then stands as an anomaly that you would have markers of dominance in a society that seeks to achieve reconciliation. So the contradiction, the tension is just too much and cannot hold. That then, that then, good point. It then leads, perhaps as would accentuate the broader point, is that I I... The point I made earlier that names are not innocent, but they embody the foundational values of that society. It's a message communicated to the populace about the essence of that society. Right? And so in selecting place name then, you look for iconic figures, for figures that are representative of the foundational values of your society. And in South Africa, many other names of white folks, Indian and colored, have been celebrated and honored for the sole reason that they are representative of the foundational values. So there is a normative reasoning fundamentally behind that is about projecting the values of a society through names. Names are educational, that's the purpose. It's a public script that seeks to conscientize, it's part of public consciousness, so that when you see Mandela, you're reminded of what the republic is about. So names educate, socialize the citizenry about the foundational values of the republic. It's not white, it's not an attack on the white, but it's a celebration of those who best represent what we seek to become.
Okay. Just to 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 summarize, in order for us to close and just reflect also on the issues that have been raised. The first issue, oh, there was a little girl here, a little girl here have written something. Can someone explain to me the relevance of names Kabecha and Kariga have to have to us, I think mean to us as children of these towns? They have no relevance to our history. The little girl from uh from uh... Let me, Pila? Yeah, I'm... Myself. The the if the, the first, the first thing you should understand is that, and I want to put this because the professor has put it for us to understand, that I'm not the first mayor to to engage in this process. When I was briefed that Mayor Danny Jordan also had concern about the process itself when he was the mayor. To an extent, the city itself proposed an option of names. Amongst those names have been raised here. And also, some other names that were proposed, there was another list of names that were proposed. Amongst those names like Sipawashu, Forrestens, um Steve Beiko, I think from the initial stage, and people like Sobukwe. And I think Molly Blackburn was also a proposed. Then it evolved that with different governments. And when this was raised, it was a shocker, Professor, to all of us. It was shocking because we would have expected that at least a name that is given to us is a name that brings us together. And I want you to to understand this, this is important. Because we wanted something that unifies us, understanding the notion of a democratic project, that we want to build a South Africa of all South Africans. And this is very important, that all of us sitting here, we should understand that we're building a project for our children for a non-racial society. That our names should not be Mr. Van Ferren's names, as we are saying, that affirms Mr. Van Ferren. And also it should not be the names that affirm Mr. Banga's name. But it should be names that affirm all of us because we're building a non-racial project. That all of us, as we're named, we associate with this and say, this name we're all proud of. And I think those who were thinking about Nelson Mandela, were thinking about Nelson Mandela because believing that Mandela brings us together. Therefore, I think that's very important. Therefore, Pila, the process is that I met with the provincial committee for them to tell us what was the rationale behind giving Port Elizabeth Kabecha, Tinaka, Kariga, the airport, um another name, and also um another name. Tell us, where are these names coming from? Because they are important. Because restoration of languages should mean something to all of us. If you're saying you're restoring a language, there must be a sense of meaning to the language you're restoring, whatever. That's why the professor, in what we are preparing, we are also raising this issue, that if you're saying you're restoring Africans, don't write Africans in English, that's not restoration, this guy from the Freedom Front will fight with you. You must write it in Africans because you are restoring a language. And if you are restoring a Koi language, write it in Koi. Because in our court of arms, there is an intention to restore the language of the Koi's. And in our money there, you see, it's written in Koi because the intention of those who were in government and were dealing with this process wanted to restore the disappearance of the Koi language, like the Freedom Front, their argument, that there must not be an intention to erase Africans, restore it. And I think this it disbalances restoration, that that's what it means when you're saying you're restoring something. That if you're restoring Kosa, don't write it in Africans, write it in Koi's. And I think that's very important. And I think that's what we're talking about, that's why I'm saying, our approach, it's not about fighting, it's about engaging into a national dialogue on the importance of our languages. Therefore, Pila, the first process was saying, Minister, we are not saying we do not want to participate as the residents of the city in the project for nation building. That's the first process. We say it's a very critical issue that as South Africans, we must have conversation to make sure that we recognize our heritage. I like what you're saying, because it's our heritage. And Professor, our heritage is that the arrival of the settlers, yeah, it's part of our heritage. Even those who arrived before, we talk about the Koi and the sun, because some believe that Ngunis like me are from the north and they've came whilst the Koi were here. Therefore, the recognition of the role of the Koi, it's part of our heritage, part of South African heritage. And I want all of us to understand, because that is very much important. Because intentionally, there was an eradication of the culture and the people, the Koi, even their history was written off. That's why there is importance for recognizing that. In building this national project, Professor, that issue is very important in this case. I always want to make an example about this. If you see the statue here in the front of the city wall of Victoria, that statue is so important, that must be kept. In order, when he walks and I walk, he walks with John and I walk with Subashle, and point that, do you know what? This is Queen Victoria. He arrived here. In this particular year, to him was a liberator to... In this particular year, to him, was a liberator, to me, might have been an oppressor. But for Subashle, who does not understand, might and must have to understand that. That I'm able to point that Queen Victoria arrived here. And we celebrate, whether it's a bad history for me, for him it might be a good history. But Subashle must know that and John must know that. Opposite to Queen Victoria, it's the, it's the square of Wisilemimi. Then when I point there and say, "This is Wisilemimi", contrary, Wisilemimi is our liberator. Therefore, you are able to show Subashle the evolution of the South African heritage. You don't have to go anywhere, it's here in front of you and make that comparison. Therefore, building history and heritage, whether the heritage is good for you or bad, but it's your heritage, it's what you are, defines you, your evolution. Therefore, that's a very important intention. Because if we do not do that, Professor, I always want to make this story about the DRC. That in the DRC, they were colonized by Belgium. Mabutusis, Petrus Lumumba, their liberator, took over. Mabutusis Seko killed Petrus Lumumba. And what Mabutusis Seko did, erased everything about Belgium and erased everything about the Mandela of the DRC, Petrus Lumumba, and changed everything and named every street, every song about himself and his tribe. Now you go to here in Central and ask those guys who cut, "Do you know the history of Belgium in your country?" They know nothing. "Do you know the history of Petrus Lumumba?" They know nothing. Because he erased. Lot of books you get about Petrus Lumumba, you don't get them in the DRC. Because he tried to destroy everything. In South Africa, as we build this project, we must not commit those kinds of mistakes of trying to erase everything. I think your argument comes there in building a nation. That's why what our, the founding fathers of our democracy said, "We must forgive our past, but we must not forget about it." Because the intention is that generations to come must not repeat the actions of our past. And I think that issue is very, it's very important. Therefore, Pila, we are engaging with the government in saying, in this city, our approach has always been that when we named Main Street Govembeki, we named this street going up here, the Western Road, Atol Fugat, and named the one that is going down, John Garnie. And named the other part of our city, George Porter. And our deliberate action in that was that we must recognize all our people, all, meaning all the residents and all the people who have made a contribution. Atol Fugat is an artist like John Garnie. Molly Blackband is a politician. George Porter, a politician. We named some of our parts like Sports People and so on. That when you name all these places, you name the airport, David Stearman, it's a Koi. You name Port Elizabeth, David Trebecha, you're saying it's a Koi name. You name Udnate, Kariga, it's a Koi name, you know Kamesh, a Koi name. The biggest question that we're asking is this part of the project of nation building and social cohesion? Because it does, your intention in naming must be restoring. That's why your issue comes again, that why do you restore one element? Why don't you reflect the diversity of the people in that recognition? That's another issue that is important. Because the project for nation building, it's about bringing people and also making people reconsider. You do it intentionally with an intention. That's why the professor is saying, an intention to change must be there. Therefore, you can change names for reparation, for reconciliation, but a commitment must be shown that you are moving away from a particular period to embrace a new generation of people you want to build. Do you understand? Therefore, there must be that commitment amongst those is to changing certain names, to embrace certain groups of people, that must be done. That's why we're saying, we're not necessarily fighting now. We are saying, these are the facts that what your actions have not embraced social cohesion and unity of people in Nelson Mandela. Therefore, this submission by the 68,000 people and also the city is to come to the minister's conscience, to say, "Talk to us. These are the values we think we want to engage with you." The last issue is that, Minister, can you be really realistic? That only 310 or less than 350 people have participated in this process. In the biggest township, Afam Tansani, only 10 people participated. Here, not more than 150. In Udnate, not more than 50, am I correct? In the area that you are taking its name, you didn't even go there. Is this justifiable action? Whilst you want to encourage participation, the professor says, "Why were you hurrying up? What rush were you on? You should have mobilized, you should have seen that many people were not involved, talk to them, use other form, engage, bring them in this conversation in order..." Because, I like the chaplain says, "Certain names refuse to die." That, Minister, you might have a choice to give us a name that you like because you have a position of power. And then the names that you want to build a nation with, then they refuse to die, like Trebecha. Because why? People won't use those names. And people continue to use their old names. And is that what you want? That's not what you want. Because people have started to embrace the fact that we've accepted that we are Nelson Mandela, we are in a Nelson Mandela city. But why can't you listen and avoid imposing a name that we won't use? That's one of the dangers, Professor, I'm talking to you now as a political commentator, that this naming process have faced is that people name an area, they call it Makanda. People continue to use it, Khini or Grandstown. That's not what we want. What we want is a conversation with the minister where all of us, not all 1.3 people would be engaged in order for us to understand the rationale around these names. Therefore, we started that political process, I've written to the minister, the minister responded. That's why we are making this submission. And this submission and all these submissions are not about the mayor. They are about the people. Because we do not want to say, "These views are not the views of us, are the views of a mayor of the DA", do you understand? Now, the voices should be the voices of the people. That's why I was asking many of you that whether have you submitted your proposals directly to the minister? Because it's not about my proposals, it's about your voices. And those voices must be heard. Because we're building a nation together. It's not only the minister who's building a nation, we're participating in building that nation. Then, Pila, it's going to depend on the response of the minister, the qualitative response. Because I'm happy with what I was briefed. It's going to be a very balanced, not a destructive input, but a one that goes to the conscience of the minister. Because our intention could be that please reopen this process for us to participate in numbers, do you understand? Reopen this process for us to have a conversation. Then if that happens, that's well and good. If you are shown a middle finger, I would have no choice but to consider other ways of challenging this process. It might be through a legal issue, based on a legal advice, but let us take this step by step based on what is going to be an outcome of the response of the minister. Therefore, with those few words, I want us to leave it there. But this has been a great process. Many of you, you might think this has been a small issue. But this issue has been so important that it put us and all of us in particular in this part of town and the municipality of Mandela. It kept South Africans in a conversation. Quite a different conversation that for the first time in this issue, we discussed it not on the basis of our color scheme. Because we have a mayor here, who's saying he's not happy but he's black and is not engaging in this discussion because he's black, is engaging on this discussion because of the content of the discussion. You have this man from Freedom Front here, he's engaging on this issue. Because conversations in South Africa and building a nations must not be about the classification of your race. They must be about how South Africans feel. Therefore, I think here in Nelson Mandela, we might have started a process and I hope that a minister might listen to this conversation because it comes from all corners of the population. I think for the first time in this thing of renaming cities, from the ANC, from the DA, from the Freedom Front, from the UDM, from mainly all political parties. Therefore, it's a process that have opened an opportunity of engagement about issues of nation building. And I hope our government could listen to that clarion call that the people of this city are together, whether they agree or disagree in conversation with government. Now, what we'll test is the ability of our government to listen. Therefore, we'll submit this document to the minister as other people have submitted. And then when there's a reaction, we'll send, we will also share when the document is submitted properly and so on to everybody to see what was submitted on our behalf. There was a lot of advice to us that whatever we're doing, we must not be seen as just radical. We might, we might be, if we just have a radical approach, we might be blocking some other people's ears not to listen. Therefore, we must be diplomatic in our approach. Because we are persuading people to give us an opportunity to have a conversation about what we want to be called. And I think it's a fair request. With those few words, I want to thank the professor for a job well done, your advice, your counsel in these issues and your assistance. And want to thank Uma Mamwas for the executive director for engaging in this conversation, the MMC for leading this process. And thank the Business Chamber and all other stakeholders who have participated into this conversation, political parties, for making your own submissions. Because we must make those kind of submissions. Even anybody else who's here who have not submitted, there's still time until tomorrow for you to submit your submissions. And then we'll wait and see what will be the reaction of our government. Thank you very much and have a wonderful evening.